Good evening, everybody, on this wet Monday evening. I hope everybody survived the storm and the lightning. Tonight, this is the special council meeting of the T A K City Council. It is Monday, August 6, 2018. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Council's going to stand for a moment of silence. You're welcome to join us if you want. Amen. Please take your seats. First item, item number one, is a public hearing on the establishment and collection of development impact fees. Chris, you're up.
Thank you. Is this working too? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're going to hold a public hearing session for the creation of an ordinance for impact fees? Yeah? Power's not there. Test, test, test.
See him, that's all.
Test, test, test.
Try a different one.
Test, test. There we go.
That's the switch right there.
And what we'll do first is we'll have a presentation from our consultant, Tischler Bice, followed by a period of questions from the Planning Commission and Council, and then we'll have a period of public comment. So with that, Julie, if you would, please.
Good evening.
Yeah, Charlie. I don't think she's on. The other switch.
Okay.
Now we got you.
Okay, great. Yep, I was informed I'd be able to hear myself, so yeah, I can definitely hear myself now. Good evening. It is good to be with you tonight to talk about the proposed development impact fees. My name is Julie Herlans. I'm the Vice President with Tischler Bice. We're based in the D.C. area. I live in Northern Virginia, and we really specialize in cost of growth services. We're here, we're pleased to have prepared and worked with the city over the last few months, and so this will be a presentation on the findings of our study to date. So just by way of background, and as a way of reminder, in terms of legalities and methodologies, impact fees are one-time payments used to fund system improvements. While they do raise revenue, they are a land-use regulatory tool, and they just happen to generate funds. Those dollars are assessed for specific purposes, for capital improvements, for system improvements, and cannot be deposited into the city's general fund, and they need to be deposited in a separate fund that's interest-bearing account. The basic legal requirements for impact fees are three. There's a need for the fee in that growth is generating the need for additional capacity in system facilities and large equipment. There's a benefit received from the payer who pays the fee, and the fees are calculated to, that reflect proportionality, so that the payer is paying their fair share of the cost for those system improvements. There are three basic methodologies that are used in calculating impact fees. They're shown here, the plan-based, cost recovery, and incremental expansion, and we have utilized all three of those in the fee calculations, and I'll talk more about that as we go through. So specifically, impact fees really are, can be done in many places as part of Home Rule, and also in other places that have a specific legislation. South Carolina has specific enabling legislation that, where all of the requirements are set forth in statute. I mentioned, impact fee revenue must be maintained in an interest-bearing account that's specific within the law. The dollars that are collected must be spent within three years of collection, and it's on a first-in, first-out basis. So as those dollars are coming in, they're being, to be spent for improvements for which the fees are collected. The city is required to publish an annual monitoring report. There needs to be a review, an update every five years of those fees. Any kind of change to the maximum allowable fee, or an implementation of the fee of which we're dealing with now, requires a study. And the Act also requires an analysis of the effect on affordable housing, of which is included in the report. So all of these items are covered and addressed within the study that you've received. So in terms of establishing the need for impact fees, and that there is growth within the jurisdiction, this shows a summary of the growth projections within the city, and this is a 10-year period of time, showing a population increase of about 2,400, 2,451, which is reflected in an increase of about 985 housing units. On the non-residential side, so for commercial, office, industrial development, there's an increase of about 165,000 square feet of floor area. So I mentioned the three methodologies, and the categories for which the fees are developed. There are five separate fee categories. So parks and recreation is one, police, fire, water, and wastewater. And what you're seeing here is a summary of the methodologies that were utilized in calculating the fees. And so across the top, we should have cost recovery, which is for facilities that have already been built, where there's a new growth that's buying into the costs that's growth-related. Incremental expansion is looking at what the current levels of service are to be utilized, that the fee will be used to maintain that same level of service. A plan-based, and the final third is a plan-based, looking at that future outlook, what kind of a plan is available, is in place to purchase or build additional facilities to serve growth. And then the final column, cost allocation, is the demand that's generating the need for those facilities. So parks and recreation is non-residential development. The rest of the fees are on both residential and non-residential development. So we have here at the front end, a summary of the calculated maximum supportable fees. The rest of the presentation after this is sort of walking through each of the fee components, or the fees within the program, sort of starting at the top level and kind of going a little bit more specific. And so, once we go through the first one, it'll kind of go a little bit quicker in terms of the approach and the methodology. But what you're looking at here is sort of the bottom line, the maximum supportable impact fees for, on the top part is for residential, and these are the non-utilities. So this is parks and rec, police and fire. So for a single-family housing unit, the maximum supportable fee, $6,676. For a multifamily unit, $3,839. And then on the non-residential side, this is per thousand square feet. So industrial is $591, commercial 3,751, office and institutional 1,466. Then on the utility fee side, this is shown, combined, water and wastewater together, and this is calculated by meter size. And so a typical single-family unit has a 3/4-inch meter. That's that first line, and then they're scaled from there. So for a 3/4-inch meter, water and sewer combined, the fee is $1,871. So I'll walk through each of the categories, kind of hit on the components, the methodology, and the calculations that comprise the fee calculation. So for parks and recreation, the components are park improvements, so those are the amenities within the parks. There's no land component calculated within the parks and rec. Fee, the assumption here is that the land will be obtained, acquired, through developer contributions. There's a trail component, which is for trail improvements. And then the golf course, there's a cost recovery portion for the growth share of the existing debt on the city's golf course. The projected 10-year demand for improvements is about $2 million, sorry, $2 million for park amenities, for park improvements on parks, and a little over, about a little over a mile of linear trails, so about 6,647 linear feet, but a little over a mile of trails, and the cost is shown here on screen. So we've included in the presentation, kind of again, some highlights from the report. This is a summary of the level of service analysis for park improvements. So this is what's in the ground today, the improvements that are already in parks within the city, and looking at what's that level of service, how many of those amenities per capita today, and that comes out to be about .0452, just sort of to work through the math. And then applying that cost per improvement, per type of amenity on a weighted basis, gets to that cost per person. Then for trails, same kind of approach, looking at what's in place today, how many miles of trails today, the population that it's serving, which is today's population, so it's about 2.7 linear feet per person, pardon me, and then the cost per foot, to get to a cost per person of $382. And then in the golf course, growth share, this is a different methodology. I mentioned this at the beginning, those other two components were the incremental methodology. This is a cost recovery. So we're looking at the amount of debt that's outstanding for the golf course, the improvements at the golf course, and looking at how much of that cost is due to both residential use, current residential use, and growth-related needs. So it comes down to be about 11% that's captured within that impact fee portion, and that's shown on this slide. So then putting all of those together, along with the cost for the impact fee study, which is a recoverable cost as part of the impact fee calculation, each one of those components, the park improvements cost per person, the trails cost per person, the golf course cost recovery per person, the impact fee study cost per person, is summed together. That gets to your total cost per capita, and is multiplied by household size for each of the types of units to get to that proportionality, which is one of the requirements for impact fees, to get to the proposed fee, for example, of the single-family home, single-family unit of $4,317 for parks and rec. And then also in the report, as part of our analysis and calculation, is a projection over 10 years of what those costs would be, looking at what those elements are, the costs and the projected revenue, to be potentially collected if growth occurs in the way that we projected, the expenditures and the costs, and the relationship between the two for parks and rec. Okay, moving on to the next category, on the police side. So there are two main components for the police fee. This is police station space, which is where we utilize an incremental expansion approach, and vehicles, which are, according to state statute, need to be expenditure over $100,000 per unit, so police cars are not eligible, but other major types of equipment, and we'll show that, which are included in that part of the calculation. So the 10-year demand for police needs is about 2,500 square feet of additional station space, and about half of a vehicle, in terms of the growth. That's requiring the need for those, at the current level of service. So next slide is the summary of the police station, same kind of approach as with parks, current, the current level of service today, and this is allocated both to residential and non-residential. So on the residential side, we're using, we use population, non-residential side is allocated to vehicle trips, to reflect the demand from non-residential development, and to get to a level of service per person, level of service per vehicle trip, and a cost allocated for the police station space. On police vehicles and equipment, I mentioned the $100,000 limit. So the two types of vehicles and equipment included here is the patrol boat, patrol boat and records and dispatch management software, so those are above the $100,000 threshold. Again, the level of service established, and the cost per demand unit here, per population, per vehicle trip, is calculated. Okay, so following the same approach, the summary of the cost components here for, again, for the police fee, the station, the vehicles, equipment, the cost for the impact fee study. On the residential side, so there's a cost per person for residential, multiplied by the household size to get to that proposed fee. So for single-family home, $657. And then on the non-residential side, the cost per trip, multiplied by the trip rates by non-residential type, to get to, for instance, on the industrial, a proposed police fee of $165 per 1,000 square feet. Same information here on the police revenue and expenditure, projection over 10 years, looking at, again, potential revenue if the fees were adopted at the maximum supportable rate, related to the expenditures incurred. Okay, gets a little repetitive. It's the same, same parallel construction. Oh, there's a little, there'll be a little curve ball in the fire, because there's a cost recovery here, but, so, fire, same thing, station space, this is a cost recovery for the growth share of existing debt service costs, and then apparatus costs as well, which is an incremental expansion. Over the 10 years, we're projecting a recovery of approximately $600,000 in debt, again, that's for the station, and then a need for an additional two pieces of apparatus, that's an incremental approach of about $1.4 million. So with the fire station, we show the total amount of debt that's outstanding, and then that portion that's attributable to new growth, which is a 27% of the existing outstanding debt, that's about $600,000. And the fire apparatus, again, is an incremental approach. What you're seeing here, again, is what's in the ground today, what the fire department owns and has at their disposal, that's establishing today's current level of service, and this is the cost and the level of service to continue to provide that same level of apparatus to future growth, at a cost per person and a cost per vehicle trip on the non-residential side. The summary of those elements, the facilities, apparatus, impact fee study, shown here on the slide, resulting in a single-family unit impact fee of $1,702. And then on the non-residential side, for industrial, $426 per 1,000 square feet, again, by way of example. And then same parallel construction in terms of the 10-year projected revenue, if the fees were adopted at the maximum supportable level, and related to the expenditures as well. So then, then we turn to the utility portion, the water and wastewater. The components in the water impact fee are a booster pump and a planned storage tank, so there's a cost recovery component on one element, and a plan-based approach on the other. The cost recovery portion is an already, an expenditure that's already occurred for these, for booster pumps. Again, this is recovery on debt service, outstanding debt service, and there's about 16% of the cost, 16%, that's attributable to new growth, and this is through 2025, which is less than the 10 years, which we're projecting out. So it sort of shortens the time period at 2025. And you'll see the effect of that as we go through. And then the two planned improvements, the storage tank, that's, the cost per gallon is calculated based on the capacity of the storage tank, so it's 1.5 million for a capacity of 500,000 gallons, for a cost of $3 per gallon. And then a truck is the cost shown here, which will serve about 6,000 meters, to get a cost per meter. So again, the summary of the components for the fee. The cost, and this is a little bit different, just in terms of the math, just to make sure we're clear, that the first portion is a cost per gallon of capacity that's multiplied by the usage, the gallons per day usage, and then there's a cost per meter that's added to that, because the fees then become, that are per meter. So the water storage, cost per gallon, cost recovery for booster pumps, cost per gallon, development fee study there, and then the vehicle cost per meter. So again, on the typical single-family unit, a 3/4 meter is about, is $1,107. Here we show projected revenues compared to costs for those water system improvements. And then the final component, on the wastewater side, is planned upgrades to lift and pump stations. The cost here is shown compared to capacity, to get to a cost per gallon of capacity, $3.17. This is applied to the usage, to the demand for that improvement, and for a typical single-family unit, a 3/4-inch meter, the proposed fee for wastewater is $764. And finally, this is the projected wastewater revenue, with one note here, that there is, that demand from the new development essentially will pay enough in impact fees to cover those expenditures by year five, and so our recommendation is that the fee should either be suspended or recalculated if new capacity improvements are needed. So this is a little bit different, but in terms of our projections, that those costs would be covered by year five. So in that, it's also included in the report as well, our recommendation. And with that, I will turn it over to, for questions. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Julie.
Mr. Mayor, Council, if you would like to start with questions?
Anybody on Council have any questions for Julie? Go ahead. Mayor Proton?
Hi, Julie. Thank you for coming. I just have a quick question. It's in the full report, and it talks about the On the Map software that you all use to determine a daytime population and commuting patterns. Can you just talk to me a little bit more about, like, that specific software, or how you determine those figures?
Sure. So it's marketed as On the Map, but it senses data.
Okay.
And it's commuter. It's really tied to investigating the relationship between residents, non-residents, workers, you know, non-resident workers, and sort of the inflow-outflow. It came out of transportation planning field, essentially. And so what we do is, we want to understand the demand, the daytime population demand, particularly, so we use that in the public safety allocation for residential and non-residential demand. And so we want to understand folks that are spending time as a resident, so that would be folks that are here and not working, people that live here and work here, and then folks that are non-resident workers, so that come in as a worker. And so the time is allocated between those sort of buckets of residential, non-residential demand, because public safety services are provided to both residents and non-resident, you know, non-residential development, and so it's a way to allocate those costs between the two land uses.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions on Council?
I do, I have a quick one. Obviously, you know, our focus is to ensure that we don't deter commercial growth, you know, looking out for small business owners and businesses wanting to come to the city of T A K. With the verbiage, and, you know, we had these discussions over the last couple of weeks, and it has to be equal between residential and commercial, as far as you can't give a discount or anything to one or the other. Like, in a scenario where the cost per 1,000 feet, is there a scenario where we could say a cost per 10,000 feet, where that commercial expense would be a little lower, but we're still being equal across the board, where we're not just handcuffing those commercial entities per 1,000 feet?
Well, you would, it would be the same relationship if you were just multiplying it by 10, I think. So the same relationship would hold. It's just, it's the proportionality, it's sort of, you know, the fair share on both the residential and non-residential side.
And so the 1,000 feet is just kind of standard. It's what it has to be.
I mean, yes, in terms of, I mean, there could be, could be per square foot. I mean, it's still, you would still be, would be still the same calculation, you would just, you know.
Just different numbers.
Yeah.
Same numbers. All right, cool. I just figured I'd ask.
Yeah.
Thank you, Julie. Can you help explain, what is the impact of cost recovery if the population growth that everything's estimated on doesn't occur, the development that everything's estimated doesn't occur as we had projected? Do we, if at the end of five years or 10 years, we haven't recovered what we anticipated to recover, what happens then? How does, how does, how does everything shift based on that?
Yeah, it would just take a longer amount of time to recover those, recover that cost.
So we could continue recovering on that same, like, piece of apparatus or whatnot, even though, okay.
Yeah, the fee and the fee collection will move in lockstep with the growth, so essentially there, if you're, you're taking longer to consume that part of the apparatus, if you will, then it's, new growth is still paying their fair share, it's just sort of moving the bar out, you know, the line farther out, because they're, it's just, they're making their, receiving the benefit of that apparatus as they're growing with their proportion, you know, with a share of that apparatus.
And so the same thing vice versa, is to say that we have this huge growth, and everyone wants to pay the fee because they're so excited to be here in T A K, and we, you know, pay for that piece of apparatus earlier than scheduled, then do we collect that fee to apply towards other pieces of apparatus that we might need, or?
So then the plan would need to be changed, but the, then it could then convert to potentially a plan base that you, you know, that there's a need for additional capacity, because you've reached the level of service that that, that piece of apparatus is providing, and so if you're there sooner, the Act does require a change, a legislative change through, you know, through a change to the C I P, but that could, you know, you could identify that through annual monitoring, that you're getting to that point quicker than you thought you would, and that, you know, it's sort of change in the, in the plan going forward.
Okay, thanks for.
Last call, any questions? Okay, Chris, back to you.
Okay, thank you. Planning Commission questions? Doug, if you want to start?
Yeah, and I've been on vacation a bunch of weeks, so I've missed a lot, and I've been following emails. And you may have already gone over all those. At what point in a development cycle does the impact fee get paid?
Building permit.
At the building permit?
At the issuance of the building permit.
At the initial building permit.
Not at the time that it's applied for, but at the issuance of the permit.
Okay, and then my next question is, and I'm just curious about, and I think you were leading towards this, Ryan, is that, and I know I'm not going to say I'm not voting for something, but what is the impact on rental rates and on housing costs when you do this? Because the developer has carrying costs, and ROI, and internal return, all that kind of stuff that developer has on a $5,000 single-family house, it's not $5,000, it's more than that. He's going to put a fee on that. I'm just kind of curious, in your work, what is that, is it double it to the consumer? A $5,000 ends up being $10,000 more cost in the house. I'm just asking.
Right, well, actually, you know, as part of the Act, which is somewhat unusual, that South Carolina doesn't require an affordable housing, or an analysis for how it affects housing affordability, it's really not affordable housing study, it's how it affects affordability of housing. So there is a part of our report that does, that does show that, you know, that's an analysis as part of that. It does vary, I mean, it depends on what the market is, it depends on what the market's going to bear, and what the... It depends on what the market's going to bear and what the, the tolerance for profit is on the, on the household.
I'm good. No questions here? No questions? Rod? Kate? Tom? Thank you. A couple of quick questions then on, uh, and maybe this is jointly for Julie and jointly for Charlie. If we adopt the study as-is, I know that there's three particular pieces that are program items, I guess they're called, that we are obligating the city to purchase regardless of how much development happens. How about the rest of the spending? Is the city obligated to spend to the total, I'll call it, spending that's indicated in the CIP and the study regardless of collections? Or is that reset at the point where you determine growth is higher or lower?
Right. So those, those, um, fees that are incremental in nature, that essentially it's moving in lockstep with, with growth. So the more revenue that you're, um, the more growth that's happening, uh, the more of a demand for the facility is needed or the type of facility, and so that's the expenditure side. Revenues collect, you know, are collected to commensurate with that demand, with that expenditure, and so that's, that's moving in lockstep. Uh, so the parks, for example, so the amenities would sort of, you know, would keep up, but those dollars need to be spent on those particular, you know, that part of the, of the, um, of what's collected. So they're segregated, you know, so those, the fees are segregated. Um, and so if you grow faster, there's, you know, more revenue, more expenditures. If you grow slower, then it, then it moves in lockstep.
Okay. And so the items that were used then in the calculations are not necessarily, uh, we're not ob- the city is not obligated to buy new fire apparatus per se. They have to spend the money on fire apparatus, but if the collections don't meet, we don't, we aren't obligated to buy new fire apparatus if we haven't gotten to the level.
Well, ultimately, yes. If you're collecting for those, for those needs, then ultimately, yes. So, once you get to that point, so if it's, uh, you know, a portion of a, if you're buying a piece of apparatus and, uh, you're not there at, at the one, you know, the need for one.
Right.
But that you are at the need for 50% of it, then those dollars need to go for 50% of it.
Right. And then, but then the city would be obligated for the other 50%. And I think, you know, the fire apparatus, you know, the police car was a good example, 0.58 of a police car. We're going to buy a police car. We'll pay the proportionate share based on collections. The city will pay the balance.
Correct.
Okay. Um, a- and then the wastewater fee, you mentioned that the wastewater fee, you're recommending that it could be phased out based on the growth projections after about year five. Uh, the same isn't true for water? And, and, and why is that?
Uh, it's the particular, um, improvement, uh, with that, the amount of growth, uh, the growth share that's sort of consumed with the capacity for that particular improvement for the wastewater. And so the, the water, the, the, um, capacity exceeds the demand, you know, because it's based on the capacity of the pipe, the system itself, as opposed to the demand off of the...
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Then I think we'll open up the public portion, if you will. Come to the podium. I think we have a three minutes. State your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Theron Pickens, Chair of the York County Regional Chamber of Commerce, which is headquartered at 116 East Main Street in Rock Hill. I'm a longtime county resident in the Fort Mill Township, and I currently reside just, just, uh, just a couple miles away in Hamilton Place subdivision. I'm also an area business owner, but I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Chamber and our Fort Mill Tugak Area Council. And my comments will closely mirror the statement emailed to each of the council members on Friday. With over 800 members, businesses, the York County Regional Chamber is proud to serve the areas of Rock Hill, Fort Mill, and Tugak. Our mission is about connecting businesses in our diverse, growing community, and one of the ways we do that is through advocacy. We have become involved with this proposed impact fee because they will, this will affect new and expanding businesses in Tugak. The Chamber is well aware of the city of Tugak's challenge in managing our area's explosive residential growth while also needing to generate additional revenues to consistently maintain the same high levels of service. The Chamber also believes that these businesses are approaching a tipping point in the amount of fees and taxes that are, they're able to tolerate. We also know that in addition to the jobs they provide, these businesses provide a tax base that is vital to the city operations and keeping taxes in check for all citizens. It's obvious in the best interest that we provide an environment where our businesses and the tax base can grow and thrive. The Chamber neither supports nor opposes this city's plan to establish impact fees, but as an advocate for business, especially those smaller and locally owned, we do respectfully offer the following request to the City Council in considering a decision on implementing the proposed impact fees. Please consider the unintended consequences these fees could have on Tugak's competitiveness from a business recruitment standpoint and possible effects of current business owners, especially those contemplating the expansion or opening of another business location in the city. Also, we realize local governments are required by law to maintain comparable impact fees for residential and non-residential development. But when determining phase-in periods, categorical discounts, other rates, please make every effort to establish these as levels that is as least harmful to businesses. Thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, Theron.
Thank you, Theron. Anyone else? Any other public comment? I think we'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing.
Time's up.
All right. And then I think we will then call to order a regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the city of Tugak for August 6th, 2018. Let the record show, we have a quorum. All members are present. Uh, item one on the agenda is to consider a recommendation to adopt an ordinance for impact fees. And I guess we can have discussion on what, what we think about that. I do have one question, I think, uh, I don't know if it's for Charlie or for Susan. Um, one of the discussions we've been having, uh, in our previous meetings is, is having perhaps a discounted structure for some categories, fire and police, for example. And if we do determine that we want to make that recommendation, can we do it in the form of two recommendations? Can we make a recommendation to accept the, or to enact an ordinance and accept the study, but that also add a recommendation that council consider, uh, a discount structure?
You can absolutely make that recommendation if that is something that council wants to consider. They absolutely can.
Right.
But any change to the fee structure...
Right.
Would require council to go back to a new first read.
Understood.
Um, which they could, they could entertain tonight via, via motion.
Right.
As made as part of their motion, and then we would have to clean up the document prior to second read, but, um, they would not be able to move forward with second read with any kind of discount.
Understood. But we, but we can do the recommendation in two parts so that they could choose to accept one recommendation and not accept the other? That's really my specific question.
Recommend, and so the, the two recommendations, one would be to recommend to accept the study.
Right.
And then the second would be a, a, a separate, via separate motion on the actual fees themselves?
That is correct.
Yes, you can do that.
Okay. So with that, Commissioners, discussion?
Well, just, I, I'm in agreement, uh, that I think part of them have to be reduced. I think, I think it's going to have a major impact on, as Theron says, small businesses and, and people coming into Tugak. Um, you know, in, in looking at Fort Mill's done, I mean, of course, they have a lot more people, of course, but I just think we have to think about what you just said as a recommendation may be the way to go. And then at least it opens up the discussion on, on, the study's fine, they did a great job. Now let's see what we can make it tailored to our small community.
I'm in agreement. We discussed it in, in our, uh, previous meetings, and I agree that we need to phrase it up into, um, two motions.
Well, I got, I was originally concerned about the commercial impact on, you heard me in the early meetings. Once Chris did the deep study on the data that he's done, though, I don't think it's as big an impact as we originally thought that it was going to be on the small business, or especially on the larger commercial development. We've got, game on is the big one we've got coming. That's the one I'm most concerned about. We don't have all that much commercial land for development in Tugak. There's just not a lot there. So I'm not quite sure of what the impact is going to be with this or not. I said, it's kind of like, the last meeting we had, it's kind of like a poker game. Don't want to raise everybody off the table, but you don't also want to leave money on the table either. So we have to be very careful on this. And after Chris's data, I'm, I'm a little bit more inclined to think, uh, maybe we do pass it in its entirety because it does have an impact on the residential if we reduce the fire and police. So we do hit that.
So, uh, Julie, um, your, your study basically calculates fees based on your projected costs for those very specific things that you went through, right? I mean, all the, all the numbers that you came up with all have a basis in a specific item or service or something that, um...
Correct.
You're, you're projecting. So, so, so my only question is, while discounts sound nice, um, where does the money come from to cover the things that have been covered in this study if they aren't covered by impact fees?
I'm inclined to agree that the, um, impact of a discount is not as large as we would, um, think when you, um, understand how much land is to be developed commercially. So, um, you know, I, I think the intent was to make sure that we weren't, um, being negative toward the, the commercial development, but, uh, the impact of that in what we have is not as great as I think the discussion would have led to. So, uh, I'm inclined to agree on that point.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, Rod, to your point, uh, i- it's exactly true. If, if there was some kind of a categorical discount applied, uh, there would be a, a shortfall in the analysis. Some of those items would have been already programmed into the ci- the city's budget because the source of the, I'll call it, the expense of those items is from the, uh, capital improvement plan that was adopted last year and that'll get, I guess, re-adopted this summer or whatever. Uh, and, and so that doesn't guarantee that they make a particular budget year, but you are absolutely correct. They would be incremental spending that would be above and beyond the fees collected. Um, you know, I'm, I think we are unanimous in feeling that we need growth to pay for growth. Uh, and I think then the only debate would be is, do we, do we recommend to council that there be, uh, a categorical discount, uh, in, in some form? And I know we talked about a variety of different things. Um, a- and again, there is a, you know, a benchmark community that we use a lot in, in Fort Mill who's kind of already addressed this, and they, and they addressed it through discounting fire and police, which uniformly impacts commercial and, or residential and non-residential. And so I think it meets the test of the statute. Uh, I think there's a benefit to the commercial side that, that we don't lose that incentive because we do know that one of the things that we need in the city is some increased commercial growth. Uh, so with that, is there any other comment? Yeah?
Just so I understand, the numbers in, in your study are present value numbers. A fire truck is not going to cost that amount of money in five years. So I agree with you. We shouldn't be discounting because we may not have enough money to buy that fire truck anyway. So the point is, how do you increase that every year? What is the mechanism that allows that impact fee to go up?
Right. So, um, we, um, tend to recommend, um, an annual adjustment. So it's not a full redo of a study, but an annual adjustment that's based on a construction cost index of some, of some kind, whether it's engineering news record or Turner Building Cost Index or Marshall Swift, some kind, something that's going to, uh, related to , uh, construction industry so that it's, uh, an annual increase, and that is also a policy decision on behalf of the council.
Is that already built into the study? That recommendation, that there be some kind of a- annual reluse? Is...
Yeah.
Part of the study?
It's state law.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Uh, then with that, I think then the order of what we should do is, is, is have a motion on these, the ordinance itself and the study, and then a second motion to recommend to council that there be a discount fee for police and fire.
Okay. I make a motion to consider a recommendation to adopt an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tugak, Chapter Two Administration, Article Five Finance, so as to add a new division to be numbered Division Four Development Impact Fees, providing for the adoption of development impact fees in its entirety to be proposed, to be imposed on the whole new development within the city of Tugak, providing for the administration enforcement thereof and all other materials related thereof thereto.
We have a motion by Larry Franklin, who is our second. Second by Tom Fogarty. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Unanimous. Maybe slight more discussion then on a second motion. Do we have to recommend a specific fee structure or just recommend that council and the city...
You can, you can recommend adoption of the fee structure as, uh, presented, uh, or rec- or anything thereof. You don't need to state the specific fees.
Okay.
But you can, um, you can reference as presented.
All right.
I have one question on it. Because we see the direction this is going with consideration of a discount fee. What if we were to pass, and city council passed, the discount fee? Year from now, we figure out we screwed up. How do we fix it? Or can we? If we put in a discount fee that phases out in five years, a year from now, can we say, oops, let's phase it out in two?
To use, to, if, to follow your hypothetical, if, if you, if the Planning Commission were to recommend, let's say, a 50% discount, council were to get on board with that and then have to go through the subsequent first read and then, and new second read, uh, on this, and we were to adopt these at 50%. Um, this would be something that we look at, uh, with council on an annual basis, um, through our budgetary process. Um, right now, without doing, right now, we have a maximum fee that was produced by the study. We can go up to that amount without commissioning a new study. So, n- if it were a 50% discount this year, and as we're doing the budgetary process this time next year and realize, mm-mm, we need to, council says, we need to amend the ordinance and increase, they can increase up to the amounts that are provided in the study without commissioning a new study. If they feel the need that they need to go over that because of changes in, in, in conditions or, uh, you know, the capital needs and things of that nature, a new commission would then have to be stu- uh, would have to be performed before, um, they could exceed the fees that are in this current study.
And we'd al- we'd also be able to decrease?
Decrease? Yes. Through, 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 uh, through an ordinance amendment. Yes.
That was my next question. If we could say, oops, we went the wrong way.
Well, it's, it is the, uh, as, as Julie gave as an example, um, you know, the, the wastewater fees on the, on the pump stations, uh, they're projecting those, those fees would be realized in year five. Well, as we approach year five, we'll be studying and looking and evaluating, have we achieved those fees necessary to make those system improvements or not? If we have and we're able to make those system improvements, then we're looking at, okay, are there other capital needs, uh, in the wastewater side of things? Additional capacities needed because a new development has, has, uh, been approved or something of that nature? If not, everything's status quo, those fees go away. Discount removed. You see what I'm saying? Uh, the same would hold true with, with, with all the other ones. Uh, one of the other fees underwater, uh, 1.2 million dollars for a water tank. All right. Let's say, yeah, it, the, growth continues to, to expand and blow up and go at, at the pace that it's at, we, we capture, capture those fees in year three. Well, we're not still charging those fees in year four and five and beyond, uh, but it may take us to year eight. Uh, it may take us all the way to year 10. Yeah, just depending on, on the, on the, but we don't need the water tower without the growth. So if the growth slows down, the revenues slow down, the expense backs off.
But can the inverse...
And they're all in lockstep together.
Can the inverse apply too? We pass this at 100%. Year from now, we have, find out there's a negative effect on commercial development. Can we then put in a 50% reduction?
Council, council could adopt, uh, through, through amendment to the ordinance to reduce the fees. Yes.
I think, I think the minimum, minimum statutory requirement is that we revisit fees with a new study every five years, I think, right?
That's correct.
Right? But the fee starts...
No, we have to do an annual report.
Right.
Annual monitoring report, uh, with a, with a kind of a five-year reset, so to speak.
Right. So having, having said all of that, then, is, would there be a motion to recommend to council that we adopt a categorical discount for police and fire at this point in time? No motion? Then I think we will, will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kathy Masters. Second by Katie. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? None? We are adjourned.
Thank you, Chris. You guys going to stay there? Are you going to move out to the audience? Okay.
You're welcome to stay.
You can just close your meeting. I'll take it from here.
I think I'm closed.
Okay, you're good. I want to thank the planning commission for all the studies. I know they've worked on it a long time. You went a lot above and beyond your normal planning commission hours. I want to thank Theron and Rod for being here. I appreciate your attendance here, just hear us out. Our intention, believe me, is not to hurt anybody, no business, no anything. We're trying to help, in fact. We have 10,400 residents that are crying for help, and I'm trying to, you know, I heard Julie say, the fair and equitable way. I mean, I guess fairness is in the eye of the beholder. Some businesses might not think it's fair. At the same time, some residents who are already living here who are having to bear the burden of all this growth might not think it's fair either. So we're trying to do the best we can. I appreciate all the input we've got. People have been calling me. You know, I really haven't had that much, I don't think I had a single business call me. I mean, they probably called you, didn't they? Game On, people called you?
I've, I've had some conversations with, with a Game On developer, but they're still moving.
So I was kind of surprised that I didn't get more calls, either way, either on the housing or the business side. So I guess they're, they're going to rely on our good judgment that we're going to do here today, and I hope we do the right thing. I think we always hope we do the right thing. I'm glad we have an out, you know, we have a reserve parachute, so to speak. If we, if we find out that it really is not working to the best we thought, we can, we can kind of peel it back some. So with that, do you have any other questions or any comments?
No, I don't have any comments or questions.
Okay. He has to give you the official recommendation.
I have to give you an official recommendation. So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the planning commission has voted to recommend to adopt an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinance for the City of Tugak, Chapter Two Administration, Article Five Finance, so as to add a new division to be numbered Division Four Development Impact Fees, providing for the adoption of development impact fees in its entirety, to be imposed on all new development in the City of Tugak, providing for the administration and enforcement thereof and other matters related thereto.
Thank you, Chris. We will now move to item three, which is the second reading of an ordinance to provide for the adoption and development of impact fees. The Development Impact Fee Act, as adopted under the state code, allows local jurisdictions to charge new growth for their proportionate share of facilities and capacity that is attributed to that growth. City council has authorized the necessary study that has generated a report that provides the calculation of fees to be charged to offset the portion of needed capital improvement items that are allowed for under the state code. Anybody have any questions?
I have one more, Charlie. From a legal perspective, let's say, when Haven's coming in, obviously those rooftops are coming in before the commercial aspect of that project.
Correct.
In that scenario where, you know, this large office park or medical park wants to come in after those rooftops and the middle school's built and everything's there, is it, are we able to say, hey, because, because they're adamantly against what it's going to cost them with these additional impact fees? Are we able to, hey, if you wait it out a couple of years, we'll probably, you know, discount it in a couple of years? And, well, I'm, I'm asking the question because the developers are going to ask it. And so we say, hey, maybe wait till next year. And we know as a council that, hey, that's on the plate for the city. Is it, it obviously would be in our best interest to do the discount at that point, but from a legal perspective with conversations like that, like, you get what I'm saying?
I, I obviously cannot give you legal advice.
Right.
But I, I would tell you that if I were contacted by that per, by a commercial developer, I would tell them that it is up to council as to what they want to do with this fee. They may, they will look at it annually. If you want to roll the dice and wait, somebody else comes in and buys the project and does it, then so be it. But council will be reviewing this on an annual basis. I would advise you to have conversations with them.
Okay.
So, but yeah, I mean, is it realistic that council will, will look at these fees on an annual basis? Absolutely. We just did last Wednesday night, ran through our existing fees. That is part of our budgetary process. Fees are adopted on an annual basis with a public hearing by ordinance. These fees I don't see would be any different. Obviously, we'll, we'll have a more robust report for you for the 1920 fiscal year. Didn't talk a lot about this one, obviously, during our budget workshop last week. I imagine our budget workshop next year looks a little bit different. We'll be talking about those, those fees coming in. We'll be providing more quarterly, more, more detailed analysis on the quarterly report for impact fees, both what we send you in your, in your packets as well as probably here in a presentation model at council meetings, just to keep council in tune with what fees are coming in. We do not project any expenditures from impact fees in year one. We want to see those impact fees come in and see what it does to the growth. I mean, we, we're averaging 14 new homes a month right now. Do we stay at 14? Does it jump to 16 or does it fall back to eight? You know, and that's things that we'll be monitoring through this first year to see those impacts so that we can provide that information to you folks, where you can make a decision every year as to what you need, what you feel you may need to do with those fees, including if necessary, commissioning an additional study to put, to increase if necessary. Yep.
Cool, thanks.
Okay, we were about to vote on the second reading of this ordinance. We were talking about tiered or reduced rates. So if the first motion by chance fails, there's no reason to bring up a second motion because we have to start from scratch again, right? So we, we can't even bring up a second motion if this fails to do a tiered or reduced rate because we have to start back from scratch. We have to do a, or that would be considered a first reading. What I'm saying is if this motion fails, we're going back to the drawing.
If you, if you do a motion for, for the second and final read and it fails, yeah, you, you, it'd be dead to none.
There's nothing else, there was no other motion?
That is correct.
There you go. That's what I was saying. I was worried about the, we talked about a reducer tiered motion, so that would have to just, that would just restart the clock.
Yeah, and that, that's all just dealing with for you. We'd have to give public notice and, and all that good stuff.
I thought I, I knew the answer before I asked it, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay, council, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading
of an ordinance providing for the adoption of development impact fees, providing for the administration and enforcement thereof and other matters related thereto.
I have a motion from Gus Machines. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Ryan Richard. Are you ready? All the votes in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? It's unanimous. Motion passes. Well, that brings us to item four, council comments. That was a rough couple of weeks. We'll start with you, Ryan.
I get nothing.
I know, I was thinking the same thing. Alicia?
So, thank you. Mayor, mayor, members of council, I did want to bring up one thing that came up at the planning commission, meeting this, this last special meeting that we held, and that was a request to this council to do report outs from the committees. And I know this is something that we've discussed, you know, a request in terms of how to, how are meetings held and what kind of things go on the agenda and how do we have conversations about that? But I did mention that I would bring this up to city council again and perhaps have that discussion. So I don't know if there were other committees that have expressed an interest.
You lost me. I'm sorry. The report outs.
So, report outs from the committees. So we have different committees that city council members support. So you've got your planning commission, Tugak Forever, the economic development. And so what the request was, is that we have report outs from the city council members that represent or serve on those as representatives on those committees.
Oh, during your regular council meeting on the agenda?
Mm-hmm. Committee report outs. Mm-hmm. And so I bring that up to see if there's any interest.
There is an interest.
Um, if we want.
There is an interest. As somebody who serves on two of those committees and spends a lot of hours sitting through those meetings, I think it would be only beneficial to have other members of council aware of what happens in those meetings.
Five thumbs up. Anything else?
No, that's all. Thanks so much.
Councilman Machines?
My only comment was I was thinking about yours. If a developer were to wait and see how the wind's blowing a year from now or two years from now, who knows who's going to be on council then?[1762.75]